Southampton City Council Meeting of October 16, 2014. I'm City Council President Bill Dwight and I will be presiding tonight. And actually now, I feel, you know, we've required that all public meetings that are televised, that we announce that they're televised, that we always, I always felt that that was sort of presumed, given the array of cameras, but just to be safe, so everyone can understand that by sitting here and speaking that you are consenting to be recorded for posterity and these video documents actually count as minutes of the council meeting. So, I've completed my duty in that respect. As our custom, before we convene, we open the mic up to the public to speak on any topic of their choosing. They perform to a sense of decorum and keep their comments under three minutes. There will be a timer sometimes. There's Joan Rivers.
Joan Rivers.
She died. When you step up, please identify yourself by, and give us your address. And understand that the councilors, by our rules, are not allowed to respond. They will listen and take note of what you say, but if you ask them a question, it will just be met by awkward silence, which is rare in a city council meeting. So, that said, we'll start with the public comment, and first up is Ellis Malensky, please.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Ellis Malensky and I live in Florence, Massachusetts, as you know. I'm here this evening to talk about a very wonderful opportunity we have. We have a very exciting opportunity. You know what that is? We can elect Martha Coakley as governor of Massachusetts. We have a woman who had, with a proven track record as an attorney general, who's quite educated, a graduate of Boston University, and hails from Western Mass. Does it get any better than that? So, why I'm here this evening is to talk to you about her mental health plan, which I'm sure you may all be familiar with. Her brother Edward lived with depression and bipolar disorder. Her brother committed suicide, as you probably have heard about. Martha is, feels very strongly that mental, the mental health system needs improvement. She has a written mental health care plan. She feels that we need to eliminate stigma and improve the delivery of services. She feels very strongly about this, and I am asking you to call everyone you know, every person, that's what I've done, everybody I know across the state, and get out the vote for Martha Coakley. We can do this, we can elect someone. Martha is a driven person, she is a, she's going to be a strong advocate for us. I just hope that you're with me on this. I hope that you get everybody out and vote for her. We can be very proud that we have this woman running. And in closing, I'm going to say, vote November 4th. It's your wonderful opportunity to get out there, and please help me to elect Martha Coakley for governor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jasper LaPienzki, please.
Good evening, and just for the record, I'll state that I will not be voting for Martha Coakley because I think she's a fool and an idiot, and I can't wait until we have another smart governor like Paul Patrick. Anyway, what I want to talk about is, back in July, this is my first ever handwritten public comment, so you know, back in July, as the issue of fragmies at Fitzgerald Lake came to the forefront, I ignored it because it wasn't my issue. But after hearing the discussion, I was eventually persuaded that not only was it a bad idea to poison sensitive wetlands to save them, it's not unlike bombing Iraq to free its people, but also it's impossible. You cannot achieve 100 percent removal of most invasives. Even if you could, it will likely come back. That said, with an eight to one vote in favor, I stepped back. The council had spoken, let's see what time would bring. But I felt that we needed to have some accountability, so I sent an email to the Broadbrook Coalition requesting that they, requesting the name of the company doing it, when they planned on doing it, and some other information. Based on the confrontational and unclear language of the reply from Bob Zimmerman, it suggested to me I could not deal with him directly. Instead, I asked a member of this body to act as the go-between, and was able to get a promise from Zimmerman second-hand: I would be notified prior to the application of the herbicide. I gave no reason why, I simply wished to keep the public and the government in the loop. This past week, I was forwarded an email by my counselor, without even informing the BBC, let alone the council or the public, the company tasked with poisoning our environment on purpose had gone ahead with the mission. I repeat, the company applying the herbicide did not even inform the body which had hired them, which was also the body tasked with preserving the land. "Beloved council, this is ultimately where privatization of the public sphere leads. A quasi-governmental bodies giving private corporations carte blanche to tailor the environment to their liking with or without our consent. This is problematic for many reasons, obviously, but it is troubling most of all because, as it stands, no one, before, during, or to this day, ever bothered to check up on the site to see if the plants have been killed, any damage was done, or even in fact if the herbicide was applied at all. I presume it was, but we don't know. The Board of Public Works is already clamoring for another series of herbicide applications all over North Hampton and Hatfield. Can we please take a step back for a moment and ask ourselves, what will it take for us to start paying attention? A three-eyed fish? A sudden vanishing of bald eagles from the Pioneer Valley? A canoeist suing the city for ER costs? I'm not even saying we shouldn't ever consider herbicides, but when we do, we ought to make damn sure they are done properly, safely, and with maximum oversight, which right now we are not."
Thank you. Spot on. Thank you very much. That's all we have signed up. Is anyone else interested in speaking at this time? Well, in that case, I will ask the secretary to call the roll, please.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Here.
Counselor LeBarge.
Present.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
Counselor Shera.
Here.
We have it all, so I will call this meeting to order. First up, we have a public hearing announcement. This is the announcement of the tax classification hearing. It will be November 6, 2014, here in the council chambers, during the council meeting at 7:05. And that is where we essentially determine the classification of taxation, how it is divided among commercial and homeownership. And there will, I understand there's going to be a discussion of this effect in finance, in a finance committee, a special convening of the Tuesday Finance Committee meeting to discuss the various options that are available. So, be apprised and attend, if you're interested in contributing that conversation. Next up is the, is communications from the mayor, and he made it, he probably didn't travel the speed limit, as terms like, did.
I observed all the laws of North Hampton. So, I am pleased to be with the city council again tonight, two nights in a row. This is, this is good. And I have a proclamation that I wish to issue tonight, entitled "National Disability Employment Awareness Month, October 2014." Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, was signed into federal law on July 26, 1980, and whereas the ADA ensures the civil rights of people with disabilities, establishing a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas currently 56.7 million persons live in the United States with disabilities ranging in physical conditions affecting mobility, sight, hearing, and speech, as well as learning disabilities, and whereas all persons deserve and have the right to an accessible workplace, accessible schools, public spaces, and an accessible community, now therefore I, Mary Jane Arkowitz, do proclaim October 2014 to be National Disability Employment Awareness Month in North Hampton, and encourage the fostering of a disability-friendly, barrier-free community. I reaffirm our goal to work toward full equality and inclusion of people across the broad spectrum of abilities. In the witness whereof, I have set my hand and affixed the seal of the City of North Hampton, Mayor David J. Arkowitz. And I believe we have a city--
Tori Eckland is here.
Tori Eckland.
Chair of the--
Exactly. Chair of our Commission on Disability is here this evening, and I'd like to formally present this to you and to thank you and the members of the Commission on Disability for all the work that you do, not only during this month, but throughout the year to advance access.
Thank you so very much.
The podium is yours if you want to--
Okay.
Welcome to speak, Tori.
I just want to thank you all for your support. On behalf of the North Hampton Commission on Disabilities, we work very hard to make the community aware of the needs of people with disabilities, and this means so much to us that to have this support and have all of you behind us in the work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. And your honor, is that it for your--
Yes, it is.
--communications?
Yes.
All right, next up, one-minute announcements, which I want to pass up. Counselor O'Donnell.
Thank you. On Sunday, this Sunday, October 19, from four, excuse me, from 2:00 to 4:00, will be the annual Ward III Neighborhood Association meeting. It will be held at the fairgrounds, and you get to it through the Fair Street entrance. And it's an annual event where you get to meet your neighbors and learn about the work of the Neighborhood Association and some of the issues in Ward III, and it's a really good time. It's open to everyone, whether or not you're a Ward III resident, so please consider attending this Sunday.
The other one.
I think I'll use the opportunity to follow up on your mentioning of the fact that the Finance Committee, which theoretically meets, I think, the third Tuesday of every month, and we do most of our work here in council to share that with everybody that's here. On the 21st, Susan Wright.
I think it's the last week.
Was it 28?
Yeah.
Okay, the 28th, so the last, I thought it was the third, but it's the last one, the 28th.
Extra week this month.
Extra week, yeah. The 28th of the month, at 5:00 in this room right here, we'll be having a meeting to review, and many of the councilors, this might be your first classification hearing, some of the options. We've talked about this before, for councilors who've been here before. There are other options to us that we could adopt that in the past we felt didn't really apply themselves to the City of North Hampton, but we'd take a moment to look in more detail at those where we're not voting on it that night. If you, I would recommend for new councilors, perhaps you want to try and come 5, the 5:00 meeting on the 28th. And Susan Wright is going to do a presentation to us of the different options that will be afforded to us at the classification hearings, and why the Finance Department and the assessors recommend a certain course of action, and have the time to actually think about it before we actually have that hearing and you're called upon to vote on it, so.
I just thank you, thank you for doing this. I think this has to do with my request, and I think other councilors, to just discuss some of the different classifications from last year, and I appreciate that.
Well, I can remember in the past several times we've said, you know, we should look in, in with more detail to what we, is it like an obligatory thing we do every year? And this is a good way to do it, I think, and to use that off-finance meeting as a forum for councilors to, so please come if it's of interest to you and you've not ever done a classification hearing before, come. We'll explain the options and why the assessors and the Finance Department recommend what they do every year, so.
And I would add to that, if you have a commercial interest in the City of North Hampton, you may be interested in attending and understand that, to date, North Hampton has not burdened or not put a greater onus on commercial properties as some other communities have in the past, so.
And I do want to point out to the public, this is a public meeting.
Yes.
So, while we are encouraging the councilors to come, anybody can come if they want to have a better understanding of, you know, what the classification hearing is and, and why Finance and the assessors recommend what they do. So, anybody can come at all, it's not just for the councilors.
Any other one-minute announcements? No Halloween events? Okay, all right. Then we'll go on to, we're up to the second reading on the resolution condemning violent acts, and this will be the second reading as amended, and the council on October 25, 2014. Is there any interest in rereading of the resolution? I knew you'd say that, and let's see, I've got my copy here. Because I can scroll down to it.
It's behind you.
It's behind me, it's up there, thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor. This is, this is upon the recommendations of Councilors William Dwight, Jesse Adams, and Mary Ann LeBarge. Whereas the most elemental tenet of a successful and just community is the necessity for people to live securely and to respect differences. And whereas the ability of a community to thrive and flourish is threatened when violence or the threat of violence is inflicted on any citizen or citizens because of their identity and/or how they are identified by others. And whereas recent acts of vandalism in North Hampton have been committed upon emblems of distinct political cultures, i.e. the theft of, excuse me, the rainbow flag from Jackson Street School, and the attempted burning of the Israeli flag at the congregation Benay Israel. And whereas both of these institutions strive to promote open, respectful discussion of complicated and challenging issues, and whereas these acts of vandalism are expressions of contempt and are implicit and actual violence. And whereas these acts are an anathema to the citizens of North Hampton and are counter to the goodness to which they aspire, and therefore be it resolved, now therefore be it resolved, that the City Council of North Hampton vehemently condemns these recent criminal acts and all other malicious actions that are designed to promote fear and discourage, and discourage civil discourse. And be it further resolved, that the City of North Hampton calls upon all citizens to express their courage and hope by engaging in respectful debate and discussion with one another and by supporting the people who have been threatened.
Move to approve.
Second. The instructions are made in second, and for second reading, is there any further discussion of the resolution? Counselor Klein, sure.
So, I voted for this in the first reading, and I feel like I need to kind of pull apart some of the things that are implicit in this, this piece of legislation. I condemn all acts of vandalism, all acts of violence. I think that there is no reason for anyone to burn somebody else's flag. However, I do feel like burning of flags is political expression in and of itself. And I think that one of our whereses here that talks about this act of vandalism being an expression of contempt, I think that it's, I think that's true, but I think it's an expression of contempt that we also need to look at in terms of what motivated it, if in fact we can, we can assign some kind of motivation to this act. I think that the context is, is that a war on Gaza that Israel was perpetrating killed over 2,000 people. I think that there are people in this community that care a lot about that and really care about freedom and justice for Palestinians, and I support that cause very much myself. So, I just, I think that we can't just see this as a hate crime, I think we need to understand it within a context. I want to say again that I absolutely condemn vandalism, I absolutely condemn the idea that somebody would burn somebody else's flag, but I do think that we need to kind of think about the expression in this resolution that says that this was necessarily a hate crime. I'm not sure that it was a human rights issue, I think it was a political expression of anger about acts of the country of Israel, and I think that that is a very justified expression of anger.
Counselor Adams.
I agree with some of that somewhat, but I do think it's also to point out that this wasn't done in a, in a public space, or the school was, but with this, looking at the burning of the Israeli flag, someone trespassed to, onto a place of worship. And, and in the other instance, someone, someone came to a school and stole a form of expression, so it's not as if this was in a, in a, in a public forum where, you know, where freedom of speech is welcome in most forms, and did a legitimate protest to what was going on in Israel, in the case of the, the burning of the Israeli flag, or I don't know what the purpose of, of the stealing of the rainbow flag was, but I imagine it's nefarious, but I can't help but think that the burning of the Israeli flag was certainly nefarious. And I think it's important to realize that those weren't done in limited public forums where certain forms of free speech are acceptable, and certain acts are acceptable as forms of free speech.
And I, if I may, I was the drafter of this, so I should like to, first of all, there, and in fact I qualified this last time when I presented, did not include the language of hate crime, because insofar that we do not know motivation in either case, because we don't know who did it or what compelled them to do that. It didn't seem appropriate to condemn them based on, and a lot of this leads to presumptions. The resolution speaks more to the effect that it had on the peoples to whom it happened to. Relevant to free speech, I agree, actually. I do agree that, but there is a difference between me burning a flag and someone else burning my flag. Because we're, when we have these semiotic debates in North Hampton, and we have them a lot, which is, I think actually speaks well of us for the most part, I mean the fact that we discuss a color scheme for crosswalks as it relates to the symbology, the value and the potency of these symbols and how they're interpreted. But I, I was assiduous in crafting this in so far as to say, in the, in the absence of understanding, knowing the motivations behind both these acts, the more relevant thing was the perception of assault on properties, as Counselor Adams said, on properties that people have a right to feel secure within those properties. So, that's, I mean, and you and I don't differ on many points in this, but that was not the intent, nor is it even in the content of the, of the resolution, so I want to be clear on that. Counselor Carney.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Klein, I really appreciate your bringing, bringing up this particular matter. And in, like other councilors have said, I agree that there are certain contexts in which burning of the flag in a public protest, for example, we saw many of the public protests on Friday evenings, a burned Israeli flag marching down the street would be a very different matter than a clandestine act undercover at night to a flag that belonged to the institution, which I do agree was much more of an expression of, it had more implicit violence than it would in a public display, in a public form of expression such as the street protests that we saw all summer. And I really supported those, sort of supported those expressions of protest as they were happening. So, I guess I draw the distinction between these kind of acts of covert destruction and vandalism, and I can see that the people who, who are members of that congregation and whose flag was actually taken and burned, or the, the school of children at Jackson Street where their flag was stolen, really felt the, really felt threatened by that. So, I find it an appropriate resolution in that regard. Thank you.
Counselor Shera.
Counselor Klein, is there language in here, in this edited version, that you feel still indicates that we're considering this a hate crime or something like, something, what specifically is still troubling you about the language?
Unfortunately, can I be recognized?
The question was directed at you, yes.
I, I'd have to kind of read this much more carefully and dissect it, I think, to really pick up. I think that there, there are implications within that are, I do find troubling. I think that, you know, there are acts of vandalism of all kinds, but we don't, as a council, rush to craft a resolution to condemn them. And the fact that we are crafting a resolution in this case is, I think it has implications that we need to be thinking about more deeply before we pass something like this. And I would have to really pull apart the language, and I really regret that I didn't take the time to do that before the second reading today. It's a good question that you're asking, and I wish I had a simple answer, but I would need to take more time to do it, and unfortunately I didn't.
Any other conference discussion?
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I think we can make the case for the fact that someone may have stolen the rainbow flag from the Jackson Street School because they thought it would look pretty in their dorm room. I mean, we, we can make a case for the fact that perhaps there was no evil intent in that beyond, gee, this would look nice hanging on the wall in my dorm room. But going to a place of worship and, and burning a flag, that is, that passes muster as a hateful act for me. You want to make a statement, write a letter to the editor. You don't go to somebody's place of wor, worship and basically desecrate it in that way. If you're feeling as such that you have to make a statement, there are better ways to do it than that, because making a statement to that congregation in this city for an international event, I think is a little inappropriate. So, I don't have any problem with that part of it. I can maybe make a case for the fact that the rainbow flag wasn't a hateful act, it might have just been a college student thinking, gee, this is pretty and I want it in my room. And I don't know if anybody here ever swiped anything when they were in college because they thought it would look good in their dorm room, but it happens. But I think going to the shawl and burning the flag is, can be considered a hateful act, and I don't have any problem with that. I guess I'm not, I'm not so politically correct that I have a problem with that.
I think one of the issues, I mean, this is a very systemic and deep conversation that we could have, but I think that the conflation in Jewish communities in the United States of the Israeli state with the ways in which American Jews practice Judaism in synagogues is what is at the heart of my discomfort here. I think that whoever, I mean, we don't know who burned this flag, we don't know what their intentions were, but we all, I think, suspect that it is a condemnation of Israel's actions. And the fact that a synagogue flies the flag of a particular country that has particular policies that are quite oppressive and in fact murderous is a problem. So, I don't think that it's a threat per se against Jews, or the congregation, or the synagogue, or Judaism. I think it is a political statement against the actions and policies of a military state. So, there, there's just an issue here in our necessarily assuming that it's a threat against the Jewish community or the synagogue itself.
The most important point on this, as I said, was not assigning or under, or even projecting intent. And I think part, and by the way, to your point about we haven't, this is somewhat unprecedented, it's not. Actually, I recall we, I'm pretty sure we wrote a resolution when an American flag was burned on a person's, an individual's property in this case, whose son was fighting in Iraq at the time, and it's, and the flag was burned by someone who was making a political statement, one of his property, and burned the flag. Now, it is that act, and I, and I think it bears more weight when in both these cases there are institutions that actually represent a lot of people, or have a certain feel for a lot of people, so consequently there are more people who feel the impact and the threat of this. And it's to those issues, it's, and once again promoting, promoting political differences and the discussion, and even the protests. And I think protests, to Counselor Carney and Counselor Adams' point, is, is appropriate, and, and albeit very uncomfortable for a lot of people, obviously, and this is, this one is a much more powerfully emotional issue than, than many that we've experienced in the community. So, I think in that respect, it's, it is appropriate for the council to once again reassert the fact that while we honor and respect the ability for profound disagreement and strong advocacy, we do not condone what qualifies legally and morally as an assault, regardless of the intent. An assault on an individual's property and an assault on something that they consider of value, regardless of what the motivations are for that value. And, and I would hold that that would actually be true for flags that I find offensive. I do not enjoy the right to go up and light that flag on fire. I do not enjoy the right to go up and light that flag on fire, of that person. I go out by my own, and that comes over the zone issues, but at the same time, I think that, I think it's appropriate for us to express our hope and aspirations, that we can agree to disagree, or have disagreements, but at the same time, there is a limit to how those disagreements are expressed. And you wanted to respond.
I just want to say again, you know, I started off by saying, I do condemn acts of violence. I do condemn criminal acts. I believe that people need to be held accountable for destruction of others' properties. So that is an absolute given. I just think that the implication of this resolution, that we're addressing a human rights issue, or, you know, possibly addressing a hate crime, and stating something about a hate crime, I think that that's where we're taking it a few steps too far.
I just have to say again, there is no mention, in fact, I intentionally deleted or didn't consider any language that constituted the prosecution behavior, or that a hate crime had been committed, insofar as we don't know who.
Except that we don't write resolutions for every act of vandalism that happens, and there is a very particular reason that we are writing a resolution about this.
That's true. That is true. Every act of vandalism does not go recognized, but this is actually generic language that speaks to that very thing. That every act of vandalism, point in fact, is a violent act. Counselor Adams?
Also, just, if you think about vandalism, you know, someone could, you know, throw a brick through a downtown store owner's window, and that's vandalism. But no, we wouldn't write a resolution about that. And I think there's an obvious distinction here. And just to point out, to circle back, if that flag was burned in a public space, in public property, it would be protected free speech. But if a person was caught for burning the flag at the synagogue, they would be trespassing, committing malicious destruction of property, and criminal civil rights violations as well at a minimum. So there's a serious difference between the two.
The other discussion on this, I actually am, I'm very grateful for the conversation. This is what I, this is honestly the power of resolutions, insofar that they have no weight of law, but the discussion, the rather challenging discussions of difficult things, that's why I think there, I mean, when we do pass resolutions, and of course, we, as a council, take a lot of grief for a variety of resolutions that we write and pass, I do think they have value. I think they have significant value, and I think that's illustrated by this discussion and debate.
Great.
And also, we prove by example that this is a better way to have disagreements at some level. So thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Could you roll call, please?
Okay, all right. Roll call, please, on the second reading.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
I'm staying.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
The resolution passes? No presentations. Right, okay. No presentations, no licenses and petitions before us. And we do have the minutes, and I should note that Pam has been wrestling with trying to get the minutes to you, and she succeeded. And I want you to appreciate the level of achievement. I just take for granted, there was a lot of work involved in getting the minutes to you, just so you know. And they are here, so I will accept the motion for the approval of the minutes that follow for Ed Lou, and the minutes on public safety.
Move to approve.
Second.
All three of them.
Second, second, second.
Okay. Any discussion on the approval of minutes? No? Just general discussion? Counselor Spector, do you have a?
Just, I lost internet on what are the dates, what are the dates of the minutes we're approving?
No, I'm sorry. For Ed Lou, it was July 1st, 2014.
Okay, thank you.
For public safety, it was November 8th, 2014.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Now it's.
Okay. No further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next up, we have an appointment for referral, this is the Human Rights Commission, Carol Toll Oppenheim, of Three Montefiore Avenue, the term to start November 2014 and expire November 2017. And this is a new appointment, so.
Move to refer to Committee on Rules, Orders, Appointments and Ordinances.
Second.
Any discussion on the referral? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we recess for finance. Pass the gavel to.
Thank you. Oh, you passed, and the finance notes, thank you.
By the way, the internet.
Yep.
I've got it. Pam, would you call the role of finance, please?
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Here.
So the two things we have on our agenda tonight, the first one is with regards to Florence Fields. And I'll read the order, and I see the mayor is poised to explain it to us, and then I finish reading the order. Upon the recommendation of the mayor, order that whereas the city has committed to the development of recreation facilities known as Florence recreational fields, and whereas the Florence recreational fields include five multipurpose fields, two baseball fields, a walking trail, parking lots, future playground, and recreation pavilion, which will contain restrooms, a concession stand, and maintenance equipment storage, and whereas the project almost doubles the amount of the City of Northampton's recreation land for field sports, and whereas bids for the development of the restroom concession and maintenance pavilion were received and opened on October 6th, and whereas funds are needed to complete the project, order that $162,500 be appropriated from the capital stabilization fund for the purpose of constructing the restroom concession and maintenance pavilion at Florence Fields. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, and I believe the mayor is poised.
Yes, I, as was noted in the, in the order itself, the bids on this were just opened a couple of weeks ago, Monday, October 6th. We had originally been projecting that the project would cost approximately $400,000. As you saw from the bid documents that we included in what we sent out to you, they came in higher than that, and so we need to come to you tonight for a transfer of additional funds for the project. You know, there were some additions to this actual facility that came up from the original planning. One major piece of it was trying to also accommodate the new DPW maintenance equipment, when we made the decision that it made more sense to buy dedicated equipment for the field, and that it even made more sense to actually store it onsite. We wanted to build into this pavilion the capability to be able to store the track, the dedicated mower, and trimmers, and all the other equipment, so that that stuff wouldn't have to keep being transported back and forth. There were also a number of sustainability measures that were added to the project. The, our Recreation Director, Emery Mojio, is here to talk about it, and I thought it would be good to see a visual, because I know people are thinking to themselves, you know, this is a very expensive restroom, or a very expensive concession stand, but it's actually quite a substantial and beautiful, and actually green, facility. So we've got some copies of the design, it was actually bid. And let me have, if I could ask you to recognize, our Recreation Director, Emery Mojio, she can kind of walk you through the building, and she can talk about some of the process that we got to today. I do want to add, I did make a request, if possible, that we could get a second reading on this project. Because we were trying to work on a fairly tight timeframe over the winter to get this project constructed for spring, we had, the bids were guaranteed for 14 days by the contractors who bid on it. So these, the price that we have in hand is a, has a 14-day window on it. And so if we took the traditional route of taking one reading tonight, and then waiting till November 6th, we would, in fact, go beyond the bid guarantee date. So that's the other reason for, well, that's one of the reasons for wanting to do it. Of course, the other obvious reason is we want to get the contractor onsite to begin doing, begin the construction this fall, so that they can then work on it over the winter time, principally the slab and other utilities, and site work that needs to happen in, for the actual construction. So if you would recognize Ms. Mojio?
Move to recognize Ms. Mojio.
Second.
Okay. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, thank you. So as you see the picture of the facility, and the mayor explained a lot of the process that we went through, how we got here with needing a little bit of extra money to go into this amazing project that you've heard a lot about over the years, that is coming to fruition, and we're ready to open the fields next spring, hopefully, and we need, obviously need a building with restrooms in it. It's not just restrooms, it's restrooms in there, there's a men's, there's a women's, and a family restroom. There is a storage area for not only the large mower that'll be there, and the DPW equipment, but also for sports equipment that needs to be in there, all the different leagues have different sections to put all their bases, and balls, and all those kinds of things that they need out on the soccer and baseball fields. Also, there is a concession area that will be great for the leagues to sell different amenities at, and different things at, throughout tournaments and throughout the season, and there's nice sitting areas with a roof over it, and picnic tables and things for people to enjoy out of the sun in the hot summer. So there is a lot in tail of it. When we started with the building, we didn't just want a cookie cutter type, a lot of our fields right now have these concrete, just square, concrete bathroom buildings. And this is obviously such a special place, that when we went to planning, when we went to plan for it, we really wanted to make it a special building. So, and we wanted to fit in aesthetically down there, we wanted it to really welcome people, and be something that we can be really proud of. So, and also, with zero energy, we have, there will be, on the roof, there will be solar panels going up, the city is working on that now, so those will be, we've, the building is designed to be able to hold those, once we get to that point, hopefully within the next year of having those installed. We're working with Chris Mason, the City Energy Officer, and with other projects in the city that he's working on to put those there. So I don't know if you have any, you also have a picture of the layout of the inside of the building, and there's also a meeting room, too, behind the concession area, there's a little meeting room area for teams, and officials, and different things, because with so many different fields here, we really expect it to be a really, a well-used facility.
Counselor? So, in that, this is zero energy, I'm assuming there's nothing that's really heated in here.
Right.
So your facilities are essentially water, and that's it, right? I mean, the water in the bathrooms, you'll have to have a hot water heater.
Electricity.
Electricity for.
There is, there is some HVAC with the bathroom.
Right, venting.
Venting, and all that stuff. And.
And the concession area, is there equipment for cooking or preparing food?
That's not included in this, yeah, no. But it will be fundraised for.
So at some point, it would need to have a vent for exhaust for.
Oh, we're not going to go, it's not, it's not going to be built to be that intense, I guess you want to say, inside with, with a cooking facility and things. What we, what usually is, sometimes you have the hot dog machines, or different kinds of things to make. A lot of times, people will have grills outside, at different, when you go to different towns, for different things, sometimes those will be outside. There'll be.
Refrigerator.
Yeah, there's refrigeration, popcorn, you know, different kinds of snacks. We really hope, we talked, we did a tour last week of the gardens, and we talked briefly, but we really hope to partner with the different groups around the, around the fields, the Crimson Clover Farm, and the, and the organic gardens and things, to try to offer, you know, the healthy, or healthy foods. Kale chips, those are really good.
I'm still not convinced of kale chips, I'm sorry. When you say the various clubs can use the concession stands, this risk of sounding horribly crass, do we get a taste of that? And, I mean, like, do we get any of that money?
Oh, yeah, we have, we will be working on some kind of plan with that. It's the only place, we don't really have any concessions anywhere else, but the way it works at other towns, which we've started to look into, is, you know, they rent it, or they, you know, per usage, whatever, whoever's using it, they, we get something, so that it can help. Usually, we obviously want it to help maintain and clean, and that's.
It's very similar to what the, what the high school sports team does. You know, the concession booth at the football games and soccer games are run by parents, or at booster clubs, and the profits are for the boost, for the teams, to support the teams. So I assume.
Yeah.
You know, Little League, and Cal Ripken, and other people who use it, will be, you'll have Cal Ripken parents, or Little League parents, selling popcorn and hot dogs to raise money for uniforms and for other stuff.
Yeah.
The whole storage of the equipment is adequate for.
Yeah, we'll figure, yeah, make that all work. It will be, I mean, usually, it's not like a huge, huge operation, and who, you know, we've gotten to the point of, is it something in the future that becomes used so much that we, you know, run, we have someone operating it, and working, you know, working there every night, and offering the kale chips to all the leagues, you know, so. But we will, you know, make sure that it's sustainable, and a lot of times, people will use some, like, we have a popcorn machine, people will rent, you know, for a minimal amount, but they'll use that for different events and things. So helps to keep the, like, you know, get the money, and then you can buy a new one when it's needed, because you.
Okay. And then just one last question about liability for people using things like that, and I'm assuming, do we require any bonding on their part, or are we covered under the city's?
That's a good question. I'm not, I'm not at that point.
We are, I mean, we're covered under, I don't know that, we do require groups to get bonds and things when they rent facilities, or when they rent parks or things. I don't think.
They do have insurance.
For popcorn machines, probably not. We have, well, we do have liability insurance, umbrella insurance, so I think they would be covered under that if we were to lend them, or rent them, the machine.
So I feel a little more comfortable knowing that we're, that we're sure of that, because I think that there's opportunities here for this to be shut down, because we can't afford to, the liability aspect. Thank you. Any more, Counselor LeBarge?
When apparently the first price came out, the storage area was not included, so now, because you're coming back, the decision of putting in that storage area has brought forth the price, correct?
Well, when we first started planning and made our budget for the whole entire facility, we didn't have that as a part of the picture, so, right. And it's since become part of it, and makes sense, and we added it, and it made the building get a little bit bigger.
I agree with that. Thank you, Emery. And Bill answered quite a bit of things, I had concerns about the liability also.
Yes, he is raising his hand. Counselor Adams?
Probably a question for the mayor. It states that it was determined that it was more cost-effective to store the field maintenance instead of hauling. Could you just speak to that analysis?
Well, we just, we, you know, this is a significant increase. What does it represent? It's like a, is it like a 40% increase in our number, in our fields?
In our recreational.
In our recreational fields. And so when we were building the budget for this past year, we were, we had to sit down with DPW and the rec department, and determine that we would have to actually hire another staff position to be able to take, to be dedicated to that, and that we would need to have an additional mower as well, that would pretty much be primarily working on this field throughout the, throughout the season when you're cutting the lawn. And so when we thought about that we would have to put it on a trailer and move it up there all the time, randomly throughout the week, it just made sense that, we knew we needed the extra tractor, and it just made sense to store it onsite, since it was primarily going to be used for this, you know, how many acre facility?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four acre facility. And so, you know, we were going to buy the extra equipment, we've had to buy aerators and additional, actually, some additional equipment to support the organic treatments that we're going to be using on the fields as well. So it just made sense to have that all stored in place. So that was the, that was kind of the analysis.
Counselor, aye?
You mentioned that some of the fees would be recouped from rental of the concession. I'm just wondering how that will work? Is that money that will go directly back into a budget, a line item that serves the fields, or the recreation department overall?
Generally, what we do, if it's, if it's something at a particular site, that the income that comes in, like, we have pavilions that we rent out, so Mainfield Pavilion, it stays in the revolving fund called Mainfield Pavilion, and it's used to do maintenance or buy things for Mainfield. So it would be, I would assume, it would be something similar to that. It makes sense.
Any further questions at this point? Any further questions at this point? Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, you know, if this were not done, I mean, we wouldn't expect any better bids at any point, it wouldn't seem. The next lowest bid on the first chart, six thousand dollars greater than the lowest one. And the difference between the lowest one and the largest bid is like $200,000. So, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense in your mind to put this back out the bid and...
I think one of our issues is we're, you know, there's a somewhat of a tight window because we wanna open the fields in the spring, like, and so that was one of the stipulations in the, in the contract, the RFP that we put out, the bid specs, what was your deadline, you, there was a certain...
Yeah, they're supposed to start it this fall and finish it by the spring, I want to say May, I'm not sure though. But yeah, so that would be ready for the spring leagues to start.
And so, I think the, I would suspect that the less time you give somebody to do that, there's gonna be more of a cost premium, particularly as, as the risk of the freeze and snow and everything else comes into play.
Okay.
So that, yeah.
Thank you, and as a follow-up, I mean, there's lots of state money here, as you point out, which is, which is great and...
Exactly, I think we've pointed out that this represents like 3% of the overall project coming from general fund dollars. The rest of it is made up of state park grants, CPA funds, and then there'll be a lot of fundraising in the community to support other aspects of the project.
So, my question on that point is, you know, do we jeopardize that state money with time and by waiting? Is that kinda the reason why you have a tight timeline for this or...
We already received $400,000, the maximum state grant for the project. So, I don't believe we'll, I'd be doubtful we'd receive any more, because that's the maximum allowed per project, so I don't, yeah.
So, I, yeah, I wasn't clear, I guess I didn't understand that we had the money in hand. I thought by waiting, we may actually jeopardize the money from the state.
Yeah, no, we've spent the park...
Not that we'd get more, but...
The park grant actually went into the actual construction, the field construction part of the project. This was more of an ancillary piece of it.
Okay.
Yep, are there questions? Seeing none, then ready to vote in finance? All in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Great.
And do you require Ms. Mogio to stay for the full council meeting? She...
No, she can...
I can't see why.
Thank you.
You can go home to the Patriots, okay?
Thank you, Edward.
Thank you.
And the only other finance, financial order we have tonight is upon the recommendation of the mayor. Order that $15,000 be appropriated from the parking receipts reserved for appropriation to the Collector's Financial Management Services account for the purpose of paying merchant service fees associated with credit card use at the EJ Gare parking garage. Do I have a motion on this one?
Make a motion.
You got a motion, second, and here's the mayor to explain this one.
So, you are all aware that we just installed a brand-new entry system in the garage and one of the features of that new system is that it does, it has the capability, it's not turned on yet, to accept credit cards. And so, what we had to do is actually go through a state procurement process because actually, the whole process of collecting the associated bank fees from all the various banks, like retailers have to do, like anybody that uses credit cards have to do, we actually had to hire a third-party financial services company to actually do that for us. And then, as a result of that, we need to now create a new account line item in our parking budget that didn't exist before for these, I guess we're calling it the Financial Management Services Account. And so, we're, we're asking to take money from the Receipts Reserve for Parking Account to populate that, this account with $15,000 to be used to then pay these fees going forward. We did do a lot of research, we got, we, we got quotes from the various vendors and talked to many of our surrounding communities. We did end up going with the state bid. The state already had a services company that had already had a bid and none of the other vendors we talked to could match the state bid. So, so that's what we need to do here and I have, the finance director can explain any of the mechanics of it. But basically, think when you go into a store to buy something and you use a credit card, there is an associated fee that gets charged off to whatever the bank is or, and that all has to be done. And this company does that and makes sure that all those different payments go to all the appropriate, you know, whatever it may be, Wells Fargo or whoever, you know, MNBA or whatever your credit card company is. So, that is one of the issues of, about doing credit cards. There is a cost to doing business by offering this. So, it is something that we are going to be monitoring. And I will also say that you may recall, as part of the capital plan, we had also had a project that looked at retrofitting all of our street kiosks with credit cards. We wanna implement this first because we wanna get a really good read on, on what those fees will represent. I know some of our neighboring communities, Amherst namely, they can be significant. Particularly, I say significant, significant relative to the kinds of parking fees that we charge in North Hampton. If you park in a parking garage in the city of Boston and you pay, you know, whatever, you pay $64 or something to park for the day, the fee as a percentage of that may not seem very high, but, you know, we have much lower rates, so I think that... So, we wanna, so this is part of a learning curve for us moving to this. But we really do believe that it, in the long run, it makes our parking system more attractive, more accessible, easier for people to figure out. And, and we just think it'll be, it'll, it'll build upon what we're, what we're doing to make it more customer service friendly. So, finance directors here, if you have specific questions as well.
Actually, the mayor answered my preemptive question about the street.
Yeah, yeah, we're kinda holding, we're kinda holding off until we get this system up and running and we're gonna try to, you know, just try to get an understanding of what that's gonna be. So, we've put this money in this account for now and now we're gonna see how it plays out for the rest of the, for the rest of the year, yeah.
Can we get some information about what the percentage is? I mean, is it industry standard?
Think like your credit card statement where you open it up and there's like this long, I mean, there's a whole, you go ahead, you can, you can run through how it works.
There's basically, when you swipe a credit card, there's actually three fees that are occurring. The first fee is the interchange fee. So, I'm gonna use the example, if you have a TD Bank Visa debit card, TD Bank is gonna get that interchange fee because they're giving, you're using their card. Then there's the assessment from the credit card companies. So, then there's a, so there's a payment to, say, TD Bank, then there's a payment to Visa, and then the third payment is the processing fee and that's what we're actually contracting for. So, then the processor who's gonna make all of these exchanges happen gets a piece of the fee. So, actually, every swipe, there's three fees going on. Now, the fees for the cards, the bank cards, the banks set that fee. It's not something you can negotiate, that's just set for every type of card that you have. The Visa or MasterCard or Discover is also a set fee, so you don't have a choice on that. And that's usually some percentage. The processing fee is what we're actually, we're able to do, as the mayor said, we looked at other vendors, we ended up going with the state bid. So, that's the only piece that we actually can control in this whole scenario of going to credit card fees. So, for, for the processing fee, it's gonna be about eight cents per transaction.
And what percentage does that represent of the parking fees?
Well, there's flat fees and there's percentage fees. For the processing fee, which is what we're going on the state bid, it's a flat eight cents, there's no percentage. But then Visa takes a piece and it varies. There's a 40-page document which tells all of the fees and it varies depending on which bank it is, whether it's a Visa, whether it's a MasterCard, whether it's a Discover. It's literally 40 pages. So, it all depends on what bank the person swiping is using and what type of credit card they're using, so.
Counselor, aye. Well, that complicates things. So, if somebody pays for one hour, it's eight cents on that one hour then, on a 50 cent. And in fact, actually, what does this do with the first hour free program that we have as well? Because if they're doing a transaction, they're only staying for an hour, they still have to swipe a card.
First hour free, we will not be paying any fees on, so if they, if they, they're there 55 minutes but they don't remember and they swipe and they get no charge, we're not gonna pay for that, so.
That was a concern and then, so I, I can see how this could become somewhat onerous if you're, if you're having, for instance, for one hour parking downtown, you're, you're paying 50 cents, we're paying eight cents out of each one of those 50 cents. So, we're, this is a significant discount on our revenues in some respect. And there's also the debit model, of course, where somebody has to punch in their debit ID from a bank, which actually is a lower cost usually in transaction fees at point-of-sale.
Actually, the debit cards cost more. The charge for a debit card transaction is, is much more. So, we will only be enabling credit card transactions at the, at the parking garage.
That's, it's more because of the processor charges or the equipment cost?
It's the times when you swipe your debit card, like a credit card.
Right.
Because it doesn't actually have, this doesn't have...
Right, it doesn't, it prompt, yeah.
There's not a PIN, so it's the times when you use your, like, my co-op bank, you know, ATM card. Also, it could act like a MasterCard if you want.
I understand that, it's, it's just that, for instance, on POS systems, point-of-sale systems in retail, it's actually cheaper for, when, when I worked in retail once upon a time, it was actually cheaper to do debit. The service charges were cheaper when you did a debit because it's more or less a straight transaction with the bank and it's not so much, you're not dealing with Visa, you're not dealing with anyone else, so consequently, it costs less. So, we always encourage people to use their debit card instead of a credit card, which took a much bigger bite. We were close to 14% in those transactions.
And all of the models that we were shown from the various vendors, the debit card with the PIN pad. Now, a person who only wants to use their debit card, if they have a Visa or MasterCard on that debit card, they're just gonna swipe it in and just act like a credit card. So, we're not putting a PIN pad on the machines because of the additional cost of that.
It's, it's, yeah, it's, and then, of course, we're in flux. There are actually now new payment systems that are actually in the offing and then probably in two years' time, we may actually be looking at an obsolete system that may, with smartphone payments and some systems like that. Just got back from Canada, they have embedded chips in every card, so you don't have to do anything other than wave your credit card and bada boom. So, and is there an ability for this system to be retrofitted in order to accommodate some of these changes, you know?
Yeah, I mean, this is a company that, that's sort of on the cutting edge. They do major, you know, they, they maybe do parking facilities in Canada, but I mean, they do...
Well, we've had our experience with Canadian operating systems.
True, that's probably a bad example. An American company doing business in Canada. But yeah, but I mean, so I think that they'll, they'll have to adapt. But I mean, again, we're also talking about, you know, we have to also go through the whole procurement process and government will have to catch up to that, those standards as well. So, but I, you know, I think, I think we're fairly confident that this system will, will... They have modules that they can switch things out, it's sort of have plug-and-play. So, if we do move to some new system like that, I'm, you know, we would need to pursue a retrofit.
I'm wondering if, I mean, this is clearly ultimately taxpayer money that is going to defray these costs, but I'm wondering if this, if we're thinking kind of long-term, does this mean that within a certain period of time we're going to be raising the fees for the, for the use of the garage in order to cover this additional cost?
I don't know that we would, I, I, we're not, obviously, we're not making, proposing any changes as part of this. I will say that, you know, that the city, independent of this, has, has contracted with a, with a firm, a consulting firm that's gonna be doing a parking study, sort of a major, big parking study of the city. We actually did a whole RFP and screening process. Your colleague, who's the chair of the Transportation and Parking Commission, was on the screening committee, that someone from the Parking Subcommittee, et cetera, and we've selected a company and they're gonna be doing a series of public meetings, they're gonna be looking at all of our, all of our facilities, looking at our pricing models, our pricing systems, looking at our inventory, our capacity, looking at what we may need to add in the future, looking at issues like the roundhouse lot that we've been discussing and what the development potential is versus the parking needs. So, we're hoping that's gonna give us some information about that, but, but we're not, we're not proposing any immediate changes. So, but again, I think this is, you know, I view it as a, it's a, it's a cost of doing business and providing this particular service, this credit card service for people, which is, you know, become so ubiquitous for, for most people, whether it's buying a movie ticket or, you know, whatever it is. And, and, you know, we frequently have people who don't have change or don't have, you know, the correct money and so, and they go to other cities, you know, right around us where they can just swipe a card. You know, Amherst, Greenfield, Springfield, they all have that capacity. So, but it is a, you know, I was having a Facebook conversation with some people the other day about some of our other online fees. That's a conversation we have to look at as well, because now when we, when people want to, you know, pay their property tax, using a credit card, there's a fee and again, it's the same process. We have to go out to bid, we have to hire a company and that's a processing charge. Currently, we pass that on to the customers. It's actually 25 cents if you use their, you know, debit your checking account, so it's fairly reasonable. But that's one of those issues that, that, you know, we struggle with, is that something we absorb or is that something we should pass on to customers and, and, you know, they've got the whole revenue issue and all those kinds of things. So, you know, as we move more and more towards electronic payments, these are the kinds of issues we're gonna have to grapple with. I know nonprofits grapple with it, you know, small nonprofits that wanna start accepting credit cards, you know, through PayPal. You know, if somebody gives us a hundred dollar donation, do we deduct it in their donations, you know, $97.25 or do we make it a hundred dollar deduction and we pay the fee? So, it's, those are the kinds of issues we're grappling with. So, we're starting with this system, we're gonna implement it, we have the ability, using this new system, to actually be able to look at the types of charges, the size of charges, what are our most frequent charges and that will really, and then how many people actually use credit cards? That's the other piece. We don't, we can't really predict right now how many of our transactions will be credit cards because we don't have a credit card capability right now. So, that'll be a, that'll be an interesting, over the next six to eight months, we'll be able to look back and I can report to you how that's going.
Any further questions on this one? Seeing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, Sam?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And being that's all we have for finance.
Could I just, could I ask one question for you? The only, the only question on this, I didn't request two readings on this originally when we submitted it. Essentially, all we're asking you to do is to take 15,000 from the Receipts Reserve for Parking and just move it into this account within the parking fund. The only reason I throw it out to you is that when we get this approved, we can turn on the credit cards. So, if you were to approve it tonight, we can contact the vendor and we can turn on the credit cards this weekend. Otherwise, we wait until your second reading on November 6th and then we can turn it on, so. But in terms of the actual, we're not asking you to appropriate new money, it's, this is money we already have collected, it's in the Receipt Reserve for Parking, it's already within the parking budget. We're asking you to move it over into this other fund to cover these fees. So, we're not, I just throw that out to you if I, it would be, it would be appreciated if we could turn on sooner, but I don't want to press my luck by asking for too many, two reading votes. Okay, she's saying it wouldn't turn on by this weekend anyway.
Not by this weekend, anyway, we still have contracts to sign. And, and one of the reasons we're doing this is, one way you can do it is you can just take the fees out of the revenue, but that's, that's how we originally envisioned this, but in talking to other communities, that's not really advisable because you really want your revenue stream to reflect the actual revenue and then your costs of doing business in another place. So, you know, originally, we thought we'd, it would all roll in and it's not the best way to do it. So, that's why we're coming retrospective, you know, after the budget to kind of put this in as a line item.
So, I withdraw the, it'll turn on this weekend, but it will turn on sooner than, you know, add, how many days do you think to sign the contract?
I think it'll, it'll probably take two weeks to get the contracts in place and we have the contract with the processing vendor and then David Palmerance needs to work with the parking vendor to basically turn on the credit card component. You know, the goal, I think, was to try to get it in place so that by bag day, when things start to get really, really busy downtown, we'll have them, we'll have them in place. But if we wait till November 6th, that probably wouldn't happen.
And is this the only other item you guys are here for tonight? If we don't, do we need them to stay for the regular meeting? If we don't, do we need them to stay for the regular meeting?
There's, there's second readings on a couple of other items in finance, so.
Then, since that's our only two items, motion to. Second?
Second.
Aye.
Okay. So we come out of recess and go back to the council meeting and revisit those financial orders. And the first up, of course, is the financial order relative to the Florence Recreational Fields Pavilion and the allocation of one hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars for that. We'll first read. Motion, second. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Suspend Rule fourteen.
Motions are made and seconded to suspend Rule fourteen, which asks for a second reading. So it calls for a second reading in this meeting. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second read.
Second.
Second, moved. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes. Next up is the financial order of fifteen thousand dollars appropriated for emergency service fees associated with credit card use at the J, Gar, Gar, parking garage or, what did you call it? Garage gees. Pam coined a term, garage gees, but. You'll accept a motion, put it on the floor?
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Suspend Rule fourteen.
Second.
Motions are made and seconded to suspend rules to allow for a second reading this evening. Is there any discussion on the suspension of rules? Counselor O'Donnell?
Did, did I understand that we'd have to wait, we would wait two weeks anyway for the contracts to be in place or is that two weeks from the day we put the money?
We can't sign a contract without an authorization. So until the sec, until you guys take your final vote, then the clock starts ticking.
So if it's approved on this, on the next meeting, the sixth, it would be two weeks from that point when we'll be well into park deepest parking season. Thank you. Any further discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All accept a motion for the second reading?
Move to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Next up, we have second reading on a couple of other financial orders. The first one is the lease for handicapped accessible entrance to Thorn's Market. I'll accept a motion, put that on the floor.
Move to approve.
Any, any further discussion on this, Counselor Adams?
Quick question. Just a quick question about, about the, the thousand dollars, the cost of the lease. Does that go to any particular place?
It's a good question. I believe it would just come in as a general revenue.
Thank you.
Yeah. That, that, it's not dedicated to any particular fund, so, yeah. Just verify that that's correct. Yeah.
Uh, any further questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
You want to vote again?
I thought my vote counts double, anyway.
No, just half each time, so they're. So that passes in second reading. Next up is the financial order to acquire land from the Cowan family. McCowen, right?
Move to approve.
Uh, there's some motions. Is there a second?
Second.
That's okay. That was good. Any, any further discussion? Roll call on this, please.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Uh, passes in second reading. And the last financial order is to rescind borrowing for the boathouse project and lamp from playground, uh, park playground and bridge trails at Beaverbrook. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
That also passes in second reading. And now, now we go up to the big chunk of, of the, our council agenda, and you probably all recall that after we had one hearing, which was required, the council felt it was necessary to have a second hearing on the mayor's administrative orders for city government. And as such, this item is removed from the agenda because we have not completed hearings on this. And so I would like to take this time that's been granted to us or that we bestowed on ourselves, probably more appropriately, and try and figure out good times. We need to, we need, we'll need to do a week announcement, an announcement, a, a public announcement a week in advance. My preference would be to do it at the JFK Community Room, if possible, to bring it to another portion of town. We have a, less than a sixty-day window in which to affect this, but we certainly have plenty of time before the next council meeting. Counselor Adams?
I'd like to suggest the week, the week after next week, that begins Monday, the twenty-seventh, because that's prior to the next council meeting, but it also gives enough notice. So if possible, perhaps sometimes that week. Maybe we can do a different time, too.
I'll be out of town Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of that week.
Monday or Tuesday. Tuesday is the meeting. Finance meeting, Counselor Murphy announced, but if we could, I mean, I don't mind doing it, it's, yeah, I think we should do it. If we could do it at seven that, that night, perhaps, as long as we're done here.
Are you suggesting Tuesday, the twenty-eighth?
That's what I'm suggesting.
No. Thursday and plus, that's the bonus week of the, it's the bonus week. Nobody theoretically has meetings, for the most part, that would come in conflict with this. Well, Pam, so I'm not going to do an official announcement on this yet, although I have to announce publicly.
I just won't be there.
Could be there Tuesdays.
Is there, does anyone have a problem with Tuesday?
No, no. And, and as per Counselor Adams' request, the hope is that we'd convene at seven this time.
That would be my recommendation, just in case there are people with different work schedules. Last one was at five, maybe.
That would be at JFK.
Yes, I think so.
Oh, means to five? How, are you? Five o'clock? Are you enough time to abide by the speed limit and get up to the JFK?
I'll get advice from the mayor on that.
That's Counselor Klein suggested, maybe do the meeting at JFK.
Oh, well, there you go. You could actually convene the finance meeting at JFK.
I think we'd rather have that here.
Okay.
Good for staff, but it's not going to go two hours, I don't think.
All right. So if we say Tuesday, seven o'clock, seven to nine, at the JFK Community Room, now I'm committing us to a room that we haven't determined is actually available to us. But I want to conform to the rules of calling, announcing public hearings. So I'm going to take a leap of faith.
Let me suggest, since that is an evening that it seems like everyone could come, that I would think the presence of more counselors is more important than the room, even though I would agree, hopefully, it could be at JFK.
We don't, that's, that is to the school committee and the school committee's property people, and that's, we don't.
No, what I'm saying, but if we can't get that room, we at least have that evening where everybody could come. And I, I would agree with you, it'd be better to do it at JFK, but I would.
You have a suggestion?
My, my only suggestion would be that there's also the, I mean, you could say it's at JFK Middle School. We've got the cafeteria, we've got the library. I, I don't have access to the schedule online to tell you if there's some other meeting, but there are, there's other meeting rooms you could use at JFK if the community room weren't available.
And then we can put signage up there. So I will announce, the public hearing will convene at JFK Middle School at seven o'clock on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth. This is of, another hearing that will convene to discuss the mayor's omnibus administrative orders and invite the public to come and contribute, ask questions, and discuss these issues. The, we had, we've already had a rather long and, and thoughtful discussion about Shade Tree Commission and also the Department of Public Works and the Board of Public Works, but hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to hear some, from some board members. There are some other issues that people may, you can find these administrative orders online if you want to see what the scope of change is. And if you agree, disagree, or, or have questions about any of those, please come and attend the meeting. And you're welcome to speak, and there is no time limit to your speaking, although we would ask you to be considerate of others who have, would like to speak as well. So, that meeting, once again, seven o'clock, JFK Middle School, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. And, as I said, that just knocked out about half of the agenda. And so we are left with, as I scroll down, I think, nothing else. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I think it back. Whoa, 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 whoa. Whoa, whoa, whoa. What am I saying? I just got optimistic there for a second.
We have seven more.
Seven more. Yep, 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 yep. All right. This is, this is second reading for bike lanes, is the positive recommendation from.
No, election.
I'm sorry?
You're missing one.
Oh, the warrant for state election? Yeah, okay. Okay, right. Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
The warrant for the November fourth, twenty-fourteen state election, this is the second reading, it's kind of important that we get. There's a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Yeah. Please be, as, as Citizen Smolensky pointed out, there is an election. Please vote, regardless of who or what you vote for. So, no further discussion on this. Roll call, please.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Okay, so we do not, we skip the next two and go to bike lanes, which is the second reading. This is, was a, saying was a positive recommendation from ordinance. A second reading, I'll accept a motion, put it on the floor.
Second.
You'll all recall, this is to actually establish bike lanes that already exist or to authorize, allow bike lanes that already exist. Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Passes in second reading. Next up is the parking prohibition, all times on Main Street in Florence. Perhaps Counselor O'Donnell wants to speak to some of the confusion that was generated by this, this, but this also comes with a positive recommendation from ordinance and a second reading, Counselor O'Donnell.
And in fact, I move we take this and the, the next one.
The next one would be the Schedule III limited time parking on Main Street in Florence, also with a positive recommendation from ordinance. I'll accept, so it's ma, the motion's made to put it on the floors, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And Counselor O'Donnell, do you want to speak? I, I know that there was some confusion generated by a radio report and some citizens who thought that we were going to abolish parking in downtown Florence.
That's, that's a good idea, thank you. Although, some have called for it. This council will preserve parking in downtown Florence. This is an ordinance simply declared, it's, it's a, really a technical correction that pertains to the block in front of Cooper's Corner in, in Florence, where there is a sign that says you are permitted to park there for an hour. However, in the code of ordinances, it was, it was actually prohibited to park there. So that's an error and we're simply making the code conform to the reality in these you are permitted to park there for an hour. However, in the code of ordinances, it was, it was actually prohibited to park there. So, that's an error, and we're simply making the code conform to the reality, and these two ordinances establish one-hour parking on this block.
Point, in fact, to our expanding parking, that was previously in the books as prohibited.
Absolutely.
That's very welcome, I'm sure. Thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion on these two items? Roll call on the two, please.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Sherratt?
Yes.
Councillor Adams?
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Adams?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Sharer?
Yes.
Councillor Specter?
Yes.
Councillor Adams?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Sharer?
Yes.
Councillor Specter?
Yes.
Councillor Adams?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Next up is second reading for the site lighting standards, also with a positive recommendation from ordinance. Accept the motion, put it on the floor first.
Second.
Motion made in second for purposes of discussion, and councillor... And I wanted to propose we postpone this one. If you recall, when it came up the last time, we asked for comment from the police department. And, I don't know, I think the comment got distributed to the members of the ordinance committee by email today. But I'll read it, because I don't think it went to everybody. But remember, we wanted the police department to comment on it. And the chief's comment was, and this was to Carolyn, "I don't know how much depth you want me to provide in comment here, but lighting is universally acknowledged as being the second most effective crime prevention reduction strategy, right behind increased police patrols. Lighting has five primary crime prevention values, deterrence, detection, surveillance, and fear reduction, and liability reduction. These will all be negatively impacted by abolishing outdoor freestanding lighting in commercial business districts. I also believe the proposal to use motion detectors is not effective as an alternative, as they can easily be thwarted, and will be getting calls for false positives due to wind, animals, or whatever. And the prolific use of video monitoring will be rendered useless, further negatively impacting deterrence and detection factors. Therefore, I can't support the change. I do want to point out that I am very much aware of light pollution and energy-saving issues, and fully support the value of well-designed downward lighting. And I might point out that our zoning already includes a requirement that the lights be downward and don't broadcast off the property." Carolyn provided another comment, and the reason I want to postpone is because I want her to be here, because I want to question her about this. Chief's response relative to lighting, to shutting lights off after closing as being part of the ordinance, let's see, because she forwarded it. My recommendations of the planning board, if this doesn't pass, will be to continue to add this as a condition to permits, and she feels this has worked very well at places like Quonlet Morgan for after-hours. So, you know, I would be concerned if we don't add it to the zoning, but planning is going to stick it in their permits anyway. I mean, I just want her to be able to be here for us to question her, so I don't want to vote on it until someone from planning actually comes back, so we can address both the police concerns about the negative impact of limiting the lighting, and also have her explain why, if in fact we don't go along with it, that they go sticking it in permit requirements anyway. So, for all of those reasons, I'd like us to put it off until they can come back. Councillor Adams?
If she adds new information or perspectives, the chief may have a rebuttal to that as well. Could we maybe ask the chief to be present as well?
I mean, we certainly could, but clearly, it'd be nice to have the planners back to address why, in light of police pretty much saying they don't support this, that they would still encourage it.
I agree.
And she's not here to answer those questions, so...
I don't know if we postpone till the next council meeting.
And afford Carolyn a chance to...
And, and, yeah, requests.
Is there a request to have someone, a representative from the police department to come speak to this as well?
If we need to, but I think the letter, the memo from the chief speaks for itself.
It seems to be pretty clear that they don't... Understand, but if we're trying to figure something out, and if Carolyn Mitch is making an alternate proposal, then I would be interested...
Then yes, it could hurt.
So, if you could include a request to the, Carolyn Mitch, and to the chief, or some representative of the chief, to come speak to this issue at the next council meeting, that'd be great. Councillor O'Donnell, do you have a question?
Oh, just briefly, I mean, it seems like we should be able to amend this with input in a way that would make it work, and provide perhaps exclusions for certain unsafe situations and that kind of thing.
So, and Councillor Carney has a motion on the floor, actually, to table till the next council meeting, right? And so, and there's a second. Any discussion on the table? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, and thank you for that information. I just forwarded you all the chief's memo, which I meant to do before I started the meeting tonight. My bad.
Could these next two be taken as a group? I'll move these next two as a group then, please.
The next, the next two, the motions made in second to move on-street parking meter zones, and violations and penalties to...
No, actually, the limited-time parking...
I'm sorry, limited-time parking, yes. Limited-time, that makes more sense, limited-time parking, and then the Schedule VIII on on-street parking meter zones. Both second reading, and there's a motion made in second, is there any discussion?
Second.
What's that?
I already got a second.
Oh, you got, oh, Councillor...
I'm sorry, you looking for a second?
Yeah, you were a second. I got you.
He did second.
I seconded the approval.
Yeah, he didn't. He seconded that.
I'm on that.
See? And credit for it. So, gold star for you.
Nice.
It's all going on your permanent record.
There is no permanent record.
Any further discussion on these items? Councillor Adams?
Looking at the 15-minute spots, in rereading this again, I noticed that the 15-minute spots will, as it states, apply to all hours. The way it currently works is that after 6:00 PM, they're regular spots. That's at least how, that's how it works. This would change that, so they'd be 15-minute spots all night, where a person could, you know, theoretically get a ticket after that point, if they only parked there for 15 minutes. I think we should either change that, so that the 15-minute rule only applies from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM, when they're generally not ticketed. So, I'll make the motion to strike all the hours where it states "all" in every category, under every, every section, to being from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM.
I second on the amendment.
All right, discussion on the amendment. Councillor O'Donnell?
Yeah, this, this was discussed in the Transportation Parking Commission, this very question. And, you know, the commission saw some value in 15-minute spaces after 6:00 PM. You may not have dry cleaners open at that hour, but you have takeout, for example. And I feel when you have 15-minute spaces, it effectively increases the amount of available parking, because it lets people cycle through. So, you know, we made the affirmative decision to keep it, after some, after some discussion, we made the decision to keep it at 24 hours. However, it was not kind of a heart, the heart and soul of the debate. And so, I think it's up for discussion whether we want to change that. I would just add that I think there is some value to looking to have these 15-minute spots in theory, and this is, again, very theoretical, because unless a police officer comes by and decides to ticket you for being in a 15-minute space, there is no parking enforcement after 6:00 PM. But I think we should discuss also the possible value of extending it slightly beyond 6:00. Other towns have it going to 8:00, even when most of the meter parking ends at 6:00. It would be nice to have the parking enforcement officer here to add to this discussion. But I, that is, that's my general feeling on this.
Councillor Sharer, and then Councillor Klein.
How would we broadcast that this change has happened? Because it's, I think it's widely known that after 6:00, you know, those become, are considered regular spots. As you point out, there's not someone going around and ticketing, so, but, yeah.
I mean, if I can answer, yeah. It's a good question, because right now, I mean, the genesis of these ordinances comes from the fact that, you know, the mayor and the DPW identified that, you know, we don't specify in our code where the 15-minute spaces are. So, I'm not sure that there is a rule about when they end technically. I could be mistaken about that, but I, like you, I have assumed that they ended at 6:00 currently, but I'm not sure that is a written policy anywhere. Perhaps it is, maybe the...
Well, actually, the, this was, part of the problem was that this was established administratively, as you noted, and not by approval from the council, and consequently, the police have not been enforcing it. It's only been parking enforcement officers. The, the police have, the chief said, since he didn't consider it actually mandated law, that it was appropriate to, to enforce it under those circumstances. So, historically, no one's been receiving tickets, to my knowledge, after certain hours, after parking enforcement officers are no longer doing the work.
When we established the 15-minute spots, it was with the understanding of the parking director at that time, that parking enforcement ends at 6:00 PM. Therefore, those, those 15-minute spots, just like any other meter spots or anything else, become free parking for all.
Councillor Klein, you were next.
I think in the Transportation and Parking Commission, one of the things that came up was the issue of signage, and how we convey this, that, you know, no lot, because the signs don't actually state that after 6:00, in fact, they revert to, you know, as long as you want. And I think that the, the reason for this legislation was, in fact, because we can't go, we're not going to go and pay to replace all those signs to make it clear. So, is, am I remembering that correctly?
I think you're correct that we discussed signage. You know, I mean, I think the current signs are ambiguous. It just says 15-minute parking. It doesn't say "at all times." I do recall Nancy Forstall suggesting that, that phrase would be useful, you know, if we go with 24 hours, to say "at all times."
Right, and that's what I remember, because meters will say, you know, ends at whatever time, 6:00. And so, people are used to being able to find that information, and if they can't find that information on the 15-minute signs, then the understanding, I guess, is that it's 24 hours. That's a discussion that I remember we had at the PPR.
Councillor Adams?
I think that extending it to, to 8:00 would be, might be confusing, and if we're going to do that, maybe that should be part of the discussion of, you know, of making some parking until 8:00. I mean, I know Councillor Freeman Daniels was a supporter of that, so I know that's been something that has been discussed, and possibly could be discussed in the future. But I think, I think for now, we should go with, with the original 10, as Councillor Carney stated, which was that these would be treated like regular spots after, after 6:00.
Now, the mayor, you were actually on transportation parking, I think, when, no?
Yeah. The only thing I would say is, I do think, well, this issue of times and things will be looked at by the parking study that we're having done, because some communities do go later in the evening. Of course, you then have to hire staff to enforce it later in the evening, so it's, there's, there's an offsetting piece there. But, you know, I do think what Councillor O'Donnell says has value in that some of these spots do serve, even after 6:00, for people that need to run into CVS, or to go to GoBarry, or to park to get takeout on Main Street. They're not just in front of daytime retail establishments. So, it's interesting. I guess, I guess we could, I, I, we can certainly, the council can do what it wants, but it might be, it's an interesting thing for us to study, how they're actually used, and we could talk to some of the enforcement people about it. I frankly think it's probably the honor system that most people go on. I mean, there's always the local folks who think, you know, well, they know no one's out ticketing, but I'd be willing to bet that there's sort of an honor system, that there's turnover in those spots, because I usually see them, I usually see them open the two 15-minute spots at the head of Main Street, like where CVS and GoBarry is, are usually open. They're usually, so, you know, I think it's part of a larger discussion, because I don't think it's just for daytime convenience, as well as, you know, it's also evening convenience. But...
I don't know, I think the signs actually serve as keeping the honest people honest, basically, and that by and large serves as a psychological deterrent in some level for long-term parking, but I think the level of enforcement is pretty loose, and so, we're actually, once again, talking about symbolism, and the value of symbolism, and what it requires. Councillor Carney was next, and Councillor O'Donnell?
One other reason I support my amendment is that there is an impending parking study that would be happening, and I think, rather than cha, I think this would be a significant change, to make it, even though the signs say neither, they don't say "all," and they don't say, you know, 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM. We were told when they were established by the parking director, parking is not enforced after 6:00 PM. So, it's understood, it's understood that any 15-minute park, parking spot is not enforced after 6:00 PM. There may be some honor system, there may be some change, and if that were to happen, I think that we should leave it as is, until such parking study, or whatever, may recommend some other change. Meaning, when I say "leave it as is," I mean with the amendment that I...
Right, just in a clarification, of course, parking is enforced after 6:00, not parking at the meters, but you can't park in front of a hydrant, you can't park in a handicap space, you can't park on the sidewalk.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying what we were told at the time by the parking director in the establishment of these ones here, to, these ones here in the, um, city hall lot...
Which is actually, we're trying to correct the dysfunction, the fact that that wasn't necessarily legitimate, and we're trying to correct that. So, that's, that's, I mean, my only concern there is, we're actually, we established a law without establishing a law, and what we're trying to do is actually establish by law and make it clear. So, I don't disagree with the reasoning in this at all. I actually think that you make a reasonable case.
I just think that it's, it would be helpful if they're consistent with all the meters, which are 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM, and then if there is a parking study that makes a case, that makes a, you know, data-based case for changing that from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, or all 24 hours. I mean, it seems ridiculous that at 10:00 at night, you shouldn't be able to pull into a 15-minute spot and park there for two hours, if you're going into Bishop's or someplace else, because not many people will use a 15-minute spot at 10:00, 10:00 PM, so...
Councillor O'Donnell, and then Councillor Adams?
I have a couple of points to offer. One is that I definitely hear this side of the argument, and I think it's, you know, I, I, I'm, you know, partially very much persuaded by it, if you can be partially very much persuaded. I'm really talking on both sides of my mouth. But, but, but my point is, I think it has some value. And however, it's sort of a moot point in a way, since, although, as, as council president points out, the Northam Police Department can give you a ticket for parking in a crosswalk or whatever, practically speaking, no one's ticketing after 6:00. So, whether we set it at 6:00 or 6:30 in the law, it sort of is a moot point, so I could see going with 6:00. I'd also just like to add to the discussion on this amendment, and I believe it's, Councillor Adams, your amendment, right? Were there, are there two amendments on the floor?
I think I did the amendment.
She seconded, so...
Okay, excuse me. Is it Councillor Carney?
Oh, you need a second.
Councillor Adams made it, you seconded it.
Okay.
But you both have authorship.
Our amendment.
Has it too close?
I, to add, to add to this, we should also put in the days of the week, because I assume we would exclude Sunday. So, that's another thing to add to this amendment if we go forward. But I, I do think that, I think the parking study will be revealing, I, I think, I'm happy the mayor has, has done this. I think it's worthwhile to have a holistic analysis of parking in the city. However, I would say, say for the record, that I hope we take a serious look at possibly changing this, because I think there is value in extending the 15-minute spots, because it will, by virtue of encouraging these spots to turn over, effectively create more parking in downtown Northampton. Perhaps not to 10:00 PM, but maybe to 8:00 or something.
Councillor Adams?
I'd just like to point out, when we talk about administrative enforcement, I guess what we're saying is that the administration has decided to enforce something that is not a law. So, that's, we can call it administrative enforcement, but really, that's basically illegal ticketing. So, I just want to make that clear. There has to be a law that allows for the ticketing. And, and I would also like to, I don't know how you want me to do this procedurally, add to, add to the amendment what Councillor O'Donnell said, which is, this, this should apply from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM, Monday through Saturday?
That was a friendly amendment offered, and it's accepted. Okay. Yeah, and just, just for the record, since we're not going to be changing the signage, pretty much, as far as the public's concerned, for the most part, people are parking in the evening, nothing has changed. It's so, essentially, what we've changed, I mean, for all practical intents and purposes, very little has changed in reality, only in codifying. Councillor Klein?
I think, I think that's not a small point. I think the fact that we're not actually able to inform the citizens about any changes, and the fact that we're about to have this, you know, mass parking study that's going to make decisions like these, that maybe we need to table this, and I mean, just not address it and remove it from the floor.
Councillor O'Donnell?
I'd like, I appreciate, I appreciate that, that sentiment. I wouldn't support tabling it, I think there's some value, important, I think it's important to put it into the code of ordinances. And Councillor Adams, Councillor Adams touches on why, but I'd also like to say, when you say telling the public something has changed, I think the public assumes that these 15-minutes are, are, spaces end at 6:00, and Councillor Carney, you're, you know, when these were established, you have knowledge that they were intended to last to 6:00, but I don't know, I've sometimes said, "I'm not sure if I should park here." Now I know better. Being, being on the Transportation Parking Commission, I know all these sneaky things I can do now, but, but I think there's, I don't think necessarily a change in, in public opinion, I think there's some confusion, and ultimately, we should seek to clarify it.
And it is more important, I think, to actually make this law in, so that the current statutes can be enforced, as it's understood by the public already, that they are enforceable. Councillor Adams?
I was just going to say that point, it's important to get it correct in the codification, even though it doesn't really change the practice, but also, it's important that we can start legally ticketing, ticketing people, which is, which is your...
Right, right. Councillor Murphy? Oh, it's, I think it's also important, because, yes, we're going to do a study, but who knows when we're going to act on the study, if ever? I mean, there's bookcases of studies we've done that nothing ever came of it, so... Three parties. Who knows how long this would be enforced, till we actually get around to acting on whatever study's there? But, you know, it is true, you know, the police ticket, handicap space violations, parking in no parking zones, I mean, because frankly, it's illegal to park anywhere that isn't a marked parking space, correct? So, if it isn't a marked parking space, and you park there, it's illegal. That's a driveway. So...
In fact, it's been illegal to park in downtown Florence all these years.
Don't say that, because that ends up as a headline, so, it's not... We'll just refer those calls from Ward 5 and 7 to Councillor O'Donnell. So, this, this discussion is on the amendment, with, with a friendly amendment adding on Sundays, so we're still talking to the, to the amendments. Councillor O'Donnell?
I was just going to move to limit debate to 15 minutes. I'll withdraw my...
Call the, call the question.
So, the question's being called on, this is on the amendments.
Yes.
Uh, roll call on the amendments?
No.
No? No, just asking, all those in favor of the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.